We'll call to recess. Meeting of Board of Commissioners, Doris. We'll take a roll, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and of course, the mayor is present, having asked for the role. Mayor Protem Selby.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins sends his regrets, Mr. Mayor. So Commissioner Collins will be unable to attend. Commissioner Borland.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, we've got a quorum, so we'll get started. We'll have the adoption of the agenda. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The adoption of the agenda will require a motion, second, and a vote.
Oh, yeah.
Can we have a motion to adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
All right, motion, second. We'll have adoption of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, ayes avert. We have adoption of the agenda, consent agenda, motion, we have the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
Motion of the second to consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, ayes avert.
All right.
Okay, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four on the agenda. This is a section for presentations and reports. First up, we'll have department head reports, so our department heads can show what's going on behind the scenes here in Manio. And we'll go ahead and have our presentation come on up, and our first department head will join us.
Good evening. Chief Basket, Manio Police Department. We had a pretty busy Halloween. Halloween actually went real well. We had no problems or issues. We did have one small incident, but it was taken care of real quick. There was a lot of people there. It was pretty amazing. Yeah, I attended in service training with Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant Brad Ivor, he instructed radar and lidar for multiple surrounding jurisdictions at the College of the Albemarle. We are still conducting police interviews. They're going along pretty well. Not sure if y'all know, we have filled our investigator spot. He will start December 1st, and I will introduce him once he starts to y'all. Investigator Moore attended eight hours of Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force training. He also attended K-9 training in Southern Pines. Officer Deaton attended Glock Armor Recertification in New Bern. We have 15 investigations. 14 of those investigations are closed. We have one that's still active and open. In October, we had 13 speeding tickets and 16 warning tickets. And that is about all I have. Y'all have any questions for me? Thank you.
I'm Melissa Dickerson, your Town Planner. We've got a lot of exciting things happening in the Planning Department right now. The Planning Board has approved the towns for, the plans for Town Common Phase Two, and we expect those bid documents to be released very soon. The Davis Lot bid documents were released on October the 26th, and responses to that request will be opened this coming Monday, November the 22nd, at 2:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. We held our visioning session for the Comprehensive Plan on October the 27th, and had a great amount of participation from the community. You will see a picture of some of those that attended on the left-hand side of the slide. As well, the first leadership meeting was held for the Comprehensive Plan on November the 9th, and the leadership group reviewed the draft goals for the new plan. They were incredibly engaged and offered a lot of really great feedback to our consultants. We are expecting a number of development applications to be made in the next few days, which will make for a very busy December Planning Board meeting. And then finally, since Frankie is not able to be here with us this afternoon, I wanted to highlight for you all the event that was held on October the 23rd to dedicate the Public Works Facility in the memory of James McCleese Sr. There was a wonderful crowd that attended that morning, and the event was absolutely fantastic. The picture on the right shows the beautiful McCleese family and the sign that was unveiled that morning bearing the name of the facility. That's all I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as our next department head comes on up, I will note for the record, and this will of course go on the recording, our town clerk, Jamie Whitley, she's currently attending training at the Municipal Clerk School in Chapel Hill, UNC School of Government. And also, our town attorney, Ben Gallup. His partner, John Leidy, is here representing the law firm, so we do have legal representation as well. So just want to note that for the record, it's all right for you and members of the board. Next up, we have our Waterfront Operations Department.
Good afternoon. Barry Wicker, Waterfront Operations. Our Ninth Annual Wooden Boat Show was held on October 30th. The weather was great, and we had a lot of people attend, probably more people attend than we've had in the past few years. We only had 12 boats exhibit. That was down 10 boats from 2019, but when I called around and checked around with some of the other wooden boat shows, they're all down about 20%. So that's, we're pretty normal there. We had exhibitors come from Chawan, Currituck, Gates County, as well as the Outer Banks. And we actually had, as far as we know, we had five people who actually came to Manio to visit the Wooden Boat Show because they saw the ad in Wooden Boat Magazine. One person came all the way from Tennessee. On the project side, we've been working on replacing the chains on the Doze Creek, little Doze Creek buoys that are out there. They've been out for almost three years now. Some of the chains were starting to give way, and we just finished that project last week. And my volunteers worked about 80 hours last week, I mean last month, and they have a fair value of around $2,000 if you value the volunteer hours. And they helped with the buoy replacement, and they've done miscellaneous work around the museum and the boardwalk and downtown. And on the Marina side, we had 47 boats visit the Marina last month, so that's pretty consistent where we've been most of the months. Average night was still three nights. That's down a couple nights from the summer, so the Marina was still busy. Marina business will start to drop off later this month and December, January. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions? Thanks.
Josh O'Brien, Water and Sewer Department. As always, I'd like to start out with a little jump into the numbers, into the swimming pool full of data, which, I know, it's pretty, not a lot of numbers, but up there, again, represents a good average run for this time of year. Meter troubleshooting looks to be about average there at 13. What we mean by meter troubleshooting is when a customer calls in a town hall, town hall would initiate a billing work order, which we will then send out one of our maintenance workers to troubleshoot, whether that be a leak, whether that be a billing issue, whether that be a meter box lid that has come undone, so on and so forth. So it's a very wide topic. The meters replaced due to age, we talked a bit in the last meeting last month. That number, again, is pretty representative of what we're dealing with right now, some of our meters getting older, so we're going through and replacing them. We do expect that number to slightly increase as the time goes on. Keep in mind, meters were replaced, the entire system over 1,600 meters, a little over 10 years ago, so the time is coming on some of these batteries in our system. So we're trying to be proactive and work through, and as we had asked for a budget increase for this current budget, and again, come budget time, we'll take a look and see what's going to be needed going forward. More hydrant painting done by the guys, inspections, and then again, number that shows for the 811 locates looks to be about pretty average at 38. So for this slide, I think I wanted to point out, just for me, often loss, I think, in these presentations, for at least the Water and Sewer Department, is the PM work that we do, which is preventive maintenance. It's gritty, it's repetitive, requires a lot of attention to detail, and often, the pictures aren't the most photogenic or glamorous. So for this month, I decided to just pick 18 pictures out of our computer management system that I typically wouldn't show in a board meeting, but you can see the first 11 pictures are inside pump station wet wells in our sewer collection system. We're required by our collection system permit to inspect our pump stations weekly, and through technology, which is an amazing thing, we're able to do all of our work orders outside of the billing department via smart devices now, so all of that data is captured on the cloud, including these pictures, so I was able to just dial in and collect a bunch of pictures to show you, like I said, that I wouldn't normally do. Past the pump stations, you can see, right here, is the road patch. Eddie Hannesick, our deputy manager for the department, has become fond of these circle cuts. You see some of the circle cuts around town. The idea behind those is to lower the impact of vehicular traffic instead of a square cut that gives more surface area to a tire that could potentially pull up asphalt. These circle cuts, you know, are kind of some new industry stand. You see them in Greenville, you see around manhole structures. They actually sell equipment now that the giant, like a hole sawed bit, that will go around a manhole and take up around manhole structure. So as an engineering, technology improves, we're trying to mimic it the best we can. Thankfully, we have somebody like Eddie to help us, and that was a hand cut as well. So did sneak a hydrant picture in here. Had to get a hydrant picture in, continue, like I said, a hydrant maintenance. That was a hydrant extension down in Pirates Cove. We're working through, along with Fire Marshal's help, to go through and really look and make sure that according to fire code, we can get access where needed. And then, the next two pictures are up at our wastewater treatment plant for bearing replacement on our oxidation ditch aerators. You can see, that's definitely grimy, gritty. Next picture is a sewer lateral replacement buried, caused a hole in asphalt, so another grimy picture. And last two, I don't think I've ever put pictures of, probably never will again, are just basic connections inspections for new construction, for water and sewer connections. So you see, and you may have seen these around town, we're going through two of these little concrete, we call them donuts, we put concrete markers here. We've been putting those around sewer property line cleanouts, and then also water valve boxes, as you see, in Dare County uses them as well. And of course, the infamous water meter, which allows us to do everything we do, including billing and for our sewer flows. So that is all I have for this evening. Thank you very much.
Josh. Josh.
Yes, ma'am.
How's it looking for the work on John Borden? I know there was, I know we had to put some things out for bid and stuff.
We have the entire package, James and I have been working. The entire package is ready to go for the RFQ process, so we put a lot of work in to make sure that the package is the best presentable package, so we can seek professional assistance as far as professional services and engineering, so we get the best package for not only John Borden, but the other approved capital projects for the Devon Street Sewer and West Side Water Looping as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Thank you.
Board members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Shannon Twitty, and I am your Finance Director, and I would like to share with you this evening some information that I think you will find most useful. The use of our convenient online and by phone third-party billing payment service provided to water and sewer customers has continued to increase. Every water bill provides information to our water and sewer customers about the option to use online phone payments. In the 2019 year, we processed 215. The 2020 year, we processed 327. The 21 year, we processed 533. We will continue to encourage the use of the online phone service and thank the board for their innovation to provide another tool in our toolbox to provide the most efficient customer service possible. Not only, I think, is it more convenient for the customer, it's also reduced the number of accounts that have been cut off because of the convenience when we make the second phone call reminder that people we are able to transfer, where they can either use a checking account or a credit card. So that has helped considerably with the cutoffs. And I would also like to share with you this evening, as I'm sure our manager, James Ayers, already has, but I would also like to just reiterate, your audit has been received and reviewed by the Local Government Commission. It has been approved without any findings or recommendations, so we are very pleased about that, and it will be forwarded this evening to our IT Director, where he can then place it on the website under the Finance tab. And does anyone have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
I'm Carl Woody, IT Director. So I'm starting off here with our cybersecurity training. So every month, there's a four-minute video that is sent out to all employees, and they watch the video, and this month's video is called Stored Document Integrity. It was about a title company that was hacked, and the hacker didn't do malicious damage, they went in and changed the document that the title company sent out to real estates for their, I guess, when they're making their payments and said, "This is my routing code and this is my account password." So they made a change to that, and when they sent it out, all the money was sent straight to the hacker. So, and these are all based upon true stories. So the biggest takeaway from this is always verify your document, especially when it's sensitive information. So, and one of the ways to verify it is to have a printout copy sitting on your desk somewhere, so if you're sending routing information or whatever it may be, you can always look, verify that it hasn't been changed or so forth. So, very interesting topic. 97.1% completed the training, so that's good. The next is the interactive kiosk. So here's a preview of the first page of the lighthouse kiosk. So looking at it, there's a couple different, up here, of course, this is all going to be touchscreen in the kiosk, so you'll be able to touch that here to see a video that may have events that's happening, or make a link to Discover Manio to see what is there to do around the Town Mania. Along the bottom here are going to be all the different interactive videos, we're doing a virtual tour, historical documents, information about keepers, logbooks, and so forth. So we're getting close to getting this one out, so hopefully in the next couple weeks we'll get it done. They had some design issues on the back end that they're working on, but it's getting closer, and that's all I have. Any other questions?
Where's that kiosk going to be located again, out there?
This kiosk will be in the lighthouse. So we have three kiosks total. So the first kiosk is going to be this one that's going to get deployed. The second one is going to be at the Maritime Museum, and it's going to talk about all the boating history, so we're trying to get with some of the local families to create a video on the history of boat building in Manio and other things that may be, you know, fishing, net shed, and all that other good stuff. The third one is going to be at the P. Island Cookhouse. So they've got a lot of videos, we just got to get with them and say, okay, how do you want to organize all your content? And get that content in there and get it given, so. Neat stuff. I'm learning so much about this lighthouse that I didn't know about before. I got pictures that, you know, I came across yesterday at the History Center, they said, "Oh, we just came across another picture," and it's the actual, it's an old picture of two people actually looking at the original Fresnel lens at the, in the lighthouse. And I was like, "Well, that's an original picture of the lens." You know, I don't think I've ever come across it. So it's a lot of neat stuff, so. That's all I have.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Butts with the Community and Economic Development Department. I'm starting off with the Downtown Associate Community Program. We're super excited. We have a meeting actually tomorrow at 4:00 here at Town Hall. The last meeting we had was in September, where we reviewed the economic film strategies, the goals, different objectives. We looked at assets, economic drivers, all the fun stuff, the SWOT analysis, otherwise known as strengths, threats, opportunities. And threats, we call challenges. We like to call those challenges. So the group that we had was a really good group that was there that evening, and they worked really hard on taking all that information and trying to form vision statements. So the state took all that information back, and now we will be looking at the possible vision statement, as well as some objectives and goals and things at the meeting tomorrow. So we're super excited, it is another step forward in this program, and we actually have some really exciting news to share with you later on this evening in the update with that. Do you have a question? Oh, I thought your hand was raised.
No.
All right. Next one. Special events. Well, it's a tad bit busy right now with all the different events that are going on. We are super excited with it, though. Everybody is really, it's kind of fun to see the community really participating in some of this. They're responding to the challenge that was set before them for the decoration contest. So it's exciting to see the businesses kind of playing around with that and being playful along with the community members, seeing who can actually win the trophy. So that was really cool. So thank you, Commissioner Borland. That has worked really well. And we still have the random drawing in addition with that, so it is great to see that interaction. New Year's Eve, hopefully you have seen What Is in Front of You? That is the poster, and it is in production, should be done this weekend, they tell me. We are excited about all the different things going on. The Subcommittee has been wonderful to work with, full of great ideas, and they are so supportive, just bringing different ideas and just helpful information into the program. So this is the poster, this is the information on it. We are still finalizing some of the kids' activities. We have a lot of them in place, but we're trying to add some new things as well, so we're just kind of putting those into place now. But we're super excited. All the Christmas stuff is wonderful, and then we get to celebrate again, once again, that month with New Year's Eve, so. And then moving on to public relations, the Manial on the Move newsletter, there'll be another one this week, coming out this weekend, so we're excited about that. That seems to be going well. That is a work in progress. We'll be continuing to edit that and change that up as needed. And then, like I said, community interaction has been really good, so that's just kind of fun to see and play with, with the community. Manio Minute is really one of the most fun things I think that we've done here since I've been here, and we do have something to share with you guys this evening for your viewing pleasure.
Welcome to the Manial Minute. My name is Carl Woody.
And I'm Michelle Butts. Woody, are you ready to jump into the Christmas season?
Did you say jump?
Where were you?
I was skydiving!
What? I didn't mean it literally, Woody!
But you said jump!
Shut up. Anywho, we have a lot of great things happening here in the Town of Mania for Christmas, and we can't wait to tell you all about them.
The first event is the Santa Ride on December 2nd at 5:30. The route will be published on our website, and you'll be able to track his location via your phone.
And we also have the tree lighting on Friday, December 3rd, and it starts at 6:00. Full of caroling, dancing, ornament-making, cookie decorating, we got Brunswick stew and cupcakes, all kinds of great things, and we can't wait for you guys to join us there.
The third event this year is the Christmas Parade, which starts at 10:30 on December 4th. The route will also be published on our website.
And there's so much more throughout the month of December that's happening in Manio, including all the different contests. Wreath Contest, that is hosted by the Roanoke Island Garden Club, Making Storefronts Bright, and Deck the Homes Contest. And don't forget, kids, to drop your letters off at the Santa mailbox right in front of the Christmas tree downtown.
The Manial Police Department and the P. Island Preservation Society are doing the Second Annual Food and Coat Drive on December 18th from 10:00 to 3:00. Two locations, Town Hall and at the P. Island Cookhouse Museum.
And the big finale, after all the great events that are happening in Manio, how are we going to celebrate, is the New Year's Eve event, Midnight Magic in Mania.
Thanks for watching the Manial Minute.
We can't wait to jump into the Christmas season with all of you in the community. We can't wait to see you all there.
You said jump again!
Woody! And Woody's available for autographs later. These have been super fun, and the community definitely has enjoyed them, but that is it, so thank you.
Michelle, this poster is excellent, by the way.
So glad you like it.
It is, and Carl's got more guts than I even thought he had. How about, just a question, and I'm sure you're on top of it, because I really don't know what I'm talking about, because I'm computer literate. How about social media on the outside, say Richmond or Tidewater, Virginia, Raleigh? Are you making plans for that on Facebook and these other things?
Yes, sir. So for New Year's Eve, we had mentioned it in the update before, that we are going to be looking at doing some more paid advertising for New Year's Eve especially, including the Facebook event actually being a paid Facebook event.
I know a lot of people don't agree with me, but I want people to come in here and enjoy Mania, enjoy Mania as we enjoy it, and be a part of us.
We've been hearing really good feedback. I know there's one particular accommodation here in Mania that is full. There is a business that's bringing their company here to celebrate for New Year's, and they were excited and wanted to know all the different things that were going on, so I think we'll have a lot of people. But yes, we are reaching out.
Excellent, and your Manial Minute is out of this world. It's really good.
It's a lot of fun. Thanks to Woody there.
I have a question for you. One thing, the Business Association, do we have an update on that besides the Downtown Associates Program, but specifically the Business Association?
And if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, we'll just roll right into the update on the Manial. This is item 4B on the agenda. It's update on Manial Business Association, MBA, and the Downtown Associate Community Program. So the good news is, we have more news, but I'm not going to, we'll let, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, we'll move on to the next agenda item?
I got a comment. I wasn't waiting to the Commissioner's concerns, but I think this is an opportunity to do it. For the parade, and I'll be kind of late, too. For the parade, is there something we can do to honor Della Bestnight? Because she was a big advocate of the parade, she was always there for the whole event.
Most definitely, and the staff has been talking about that, so yes, sir. Most definitely, because she was just a wonderful asset to the town, and she loved Mania, and it will not be the same without her, so.
Is it going to be a grandstand this year, the parade?
Yes, sir. There will be.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Michelle.
All right, so thank you, Commissioner Borland. Moving on. So when we talk about the Manial Business Association, we really need to also talk about the Downtown Associate Community Program. They will work hand in hand together, because they are very similar in what they do. So really, to start off, the Manial Business Association, basically, the concept, it's a unified network of businesses that support each other with a common goal of achieving growth and success for not only themselves, but other businesses and their community. Opportunities and resources are shared as part of that, and it's really marketing and promotion a lot for the local community. The DAC is much along the same lines, but it is the three-year pathway to the Main Street Designation and to Main Street America. Main Street America is a prestigious program offered in the state, and it is national. It's a national program as well, so we don't want to forget that. It's administered by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and they have staff that work out of the North Carolina Main Street Emerald Planning Center that help with that, and those are the staff that have been coming to the meetings here in Mania, or that you've seen on the Zoom meetings, either one. But the program consists of a four-point approach, which has been really reiterated every time we have the meetings, and the four-point approach is comprised of design, economic vitality, organization, and promotion. So those are the four main concepts that they really base it off of. And the Main Street program has been active now for over 40 years. It has been very successful, so we have a lot of information to go from and look forward to also being a part of that success story. Other strategies, the strategies that they use actually will produce measurable results, which is what we always want to see when we're talking about growing business economy or the local community and other facets. So we definitely want to see something that can produce those measurable results, however they may be, because it is an investment, not just in the local business, but also your community. So it helps us grow and helps create jobs and all kinds of great stuff. So it's more than just local business, but it is the entire community, so that's a nice holistic approach to the DAC. DAC, if we will scroll up a little bit, the town applied to the program in the summer of 2019, and it entered this three-year program in the summer of 2020, so it actually activated in the summer of 2020. Now, the MBA concept was proposed in the spring of 2020, basically rolled out to the community as an idea of how the town can continue to help support the local businesses in the area. And some of the things we mentioned, that the town was excited about supporting businesses with, was not just staff assistance, but marketing promotion, so creating the websites, even a even a rough draft of a brochure, the associated social media platforms, and those are already up and running for some of that. The Downtown or the Manio Business Association website is created, but we never activated until such time that it needs to be, but it's actually in the in the wings waiting, so it's ready to go, obviously with some tweaks that we need to make. But also, the Discover Manio platform is already up and running with not just the Facebook, but the Instagram, and we're working on the Pinterest to utilize that for things like itineraries. When you get to Manio, here is, here's some examples of a day or two or a week, because we want them to stay a week in here, right? And we give them ideas of things to do. And the fun thing that ran into a few businesses this week and was really excited to hear was that some of them were kind of working on their own itineraries, getting excited, and how to connect some of the, you know, areas of Manio together. And they were saying that one way to do that is through these itineraries and saying, don't forget, if you're doing a history tour today, you go here, Pea Island, or you go downtown to the museum. So it was really, really encouraging to hear the businesses already doing that on their own, but we definitely want to help and assist them with that as well. So there's already things in the works for the MBA, as you are already familiar with, Commissioner Borland. And so, next one. So the DAC, the community members have been a big part, obviously, of the program, and they've been through a series of presentations, learning about the different four-point approach, as well as just looking at what is an economic driver, what is an asset, what are the different kinds of assets and things of that nature. So they've gone through some schooling, and they've worked really hard, and we do appreciate their perseverance in that, because that can be a little hard going through that. But they're now up and rolling, and they've kind of rolled up their sleeves, and now they're taking all that information and really making it into something and molding into a plan, hopefully that will roll out soon next year. So, but the MBA, or a similar collaboration that you see up here, can be proposed as an action item to help with the DAC, to help sustain that base of local businesses that we're looking for. So actually, the DAC will help with the creation or potential creation of an MBA. And actually, I think it would make it stronger, because people would better understand what the benefits or advantages of would be, you know, of an MBA. So next, the most exciting news. So Manio Business Association, we're gonna slide up a little bit. There we go. So like I mentioned before, we're already working on organizational activities for the MBA, such as the website, the brochure, Discover Manio, and all of those other activities. And so we would be looking at potentially maybe the creation of something of that or something similar in the summer or fall of 2022 that goes in line with the Downtown program. So they work hand in hand, just like we mentioned the comprehensive plan and the Downtown program working together, very similar concept. But the most exciting news that we received is the town of Manio is always, you know, super awesome, and the community members have been doing such a good job that the state notified us, and they want to actually move Manio up one year early. As I mentioned before, it's a three-year program, but now they want to make Manio a Main Street one year early and do it by July of 2022. So we are just, I don't know, speechless on that. And staff, before I got here, worked really hard on the application, and the community's been working hard, and so it's just exciting to see all that work and effort really coming into play and being recognized, and the state is very appreciative. And there are only two out of the six communities that currently they are wanting to do that with. So currently, there are six communities in the Downtown Associate Community Program, but only two of them they currently want to move up a year early. And the other one is Murphy, funny enough, so. But that's it. I just definitely wanted to thank you guys for all your help and support along the way. Thank the community for their help and support, and then Mr. Semple, Mr. Massey, you guys have been there, and then Malcolm. We couldn't have done it without them. This is their program, it is their plan, it's their community. So we just want to thank them for their time and their help, and we've got still some work to do, but we are getting closer and closer. I hope that answers your questions.
It did. That's awesome. That's awesome. But thank you. I thought, surely you shouldn't forget, it's on the agenda here. So that's, that's great news, and it sounds like, you know, I've been worried that the Business Association and the, you know, they weren't working together, and people are getting confused, and so it sounds like we finally got there, where DAC is gonna help out the MBA, and that's great.
I think it would actually be, I think, a little bit better, because it will have a little bit more support to it, and maybe help better, you know, explain what the roles of both of them will be. And another item I forgot to mention, we're working too also, we've already got the paperwork for the 501(c)(6) for that, which is a designation from the Internal Revenue Service for things like the Chamber of Commerce and these business associations that are really nonprofit. So that's already in the works too, so hopefully all that stuff will just be ready to go as soon as it's needed, so.
Accolade to you, James. I won't say that personally. You know I've stayed on you by this Main Street. I've asked you how many times about where we stand? And we're getting there. That's all I got. We're getting there, but we're getting there, and I want to say this to you personally, that thank you, because nobody, not many people in Manio know the designation of Main Street, North Carolina. It will mean money, it'll mean funds, it'll mean recognition. I can go on and on and on. Michelle, thank you, and the rest of the staff, because one person could not pull it off. But this, this is really big. Well, we're getting there, it sounds to me like.
We are.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Now that, we still have one more thing left on presentations and reports, and this is item 4(c), and if it's all right, I'll stand in for the town clerk in this case. I'll do my best, my best attempt to channel the Ms. Jamie Whitley. She has provided an update on boards and committees. Now, this item is for information. It's not an action item for tonight, but wanted to make sure that the board was aware, the Board of Commissioners was aware of the boards and the vacancies maybe coming up on boards and committees, and also kind of get to let you know that we want to do a full court press to solicit interest. In fact, I will say that at least one member of the audience has already applied for one of, one of the open positions and has been actively attending, actively attending meetings. So if I'll, I'll turn around to the slideshow here. We'll go to the next slide. And this, of course, that was a picture of our Planning and Zoning Board in action. We have, of course, we've got various boards and committees that are, that are appointed. The majority of them are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. We, of course, talk about the Planning and Zoning Board, the Preservation Architectural Review Committee. That one is actually an interesting anomaly. It's not an anomaly. It's a little bit different, though. Our ordinance specifies that park members are appointed by the Planning and Zoning Board, which I thought was, was rather interesting. However, as you keep, as you keep going down the list, Cemetery Board, Board of Adjustment, Special Events, and our Community Police Advisory Board, all of those members are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. So as we go on to the next slide, you'll actually see that there are some vacancies that'll be coming up, and as, we would expect that those appointments would be made in January, but between, you know, between now and, between now and then, we want to get the word out in many, as many ways as we can, newspaper ads, social media, handbills, flyers that we hand out in the community, try and reach all, all members of our community. Planning and Zoning Board will have, will have three, three positions up for, for appointment, so that you certainly can do reappointment should people choose to serve or continue to serve, but you do have some vacancies that you will have to appoint a new person. The, I almost hate to talk about Cemetery Board, because we, we lost our, our chair recently, Ms. Linda. So obviously, it terms on expired, but we'll want someone who loves the cemetery to come into that role, and so that's going to be, that's going to be important, because our cemetery is so near, it's a sacred place here in town. The Board of Adjustment, of course, we've got a number of members, and it actually had its first meeting in years last, last month, and may have more work coming up before. So we'll make sure that we've got a full complement of members there. Preservation Park, I mentioned, that one has a different appointment process, but we want to be aware of that. They still want to apply, you know, apply for the position. And that last one, the Dare County Land Transfer Board, apparently hasn't met in over a decade, but will need to do an appointment for that one as well. We will, if it's all right, assuming there's no objection from the board, we're gonna go ahead and put a full court press, start getting ads and postings and things about, about that out there, so. But wanted to give, give you all the information. So of course, nobody knows the community as well as the elected members who take care of their constituents. So if you know constituents, you know people might be interested, please make those referrals, let them know. And we're also happy, as staff members, you'll notice with those boards, different, different staff members are liaisons to those boards. So we're happy to, in the meantime, to meet with potential candidates, just kind of let them know what the, you know, what the duties are like, what they can expect. I remember in prior rounds that I'd had, stopped over from Porch Cafe and sat down with a couple of different people to talk to them about, you know, what, what's really required in each, each one, because they're all very different. But we'd love to have any referrals from the, from the board as well, and we'll, we'll go out and meet in person with those folks if that's appropriate. So that's all we have for boards and committees. If there's any questions, we, we can move on to the next agenda item. If it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, we'll move on to public comment. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and location so that your statements can be recorded. If anybody would like to make a public comment, they may approach the lectern.
Good evening. I'm Bill Massey, 306 Devon Street here in Manio. As a civic-minded member of our community, I want to express profound gratitude to James Ayers for his service as their town manager, for the leadership he has brought to the community, the professionalism that he has instilled in the office, his dedication of town time and resources to the advancement of all of the areas, all the departments of our town, which I think we saw tonight, really have, have shown tremendous growth and development over the years. So, James, my profound gratitude to you. Secondly, I would like to express my hope and hopefully my confidence that going forward, the board will engage in a full, transparent, and open process for finding the new town manager. And I hope that we will build on the success that we have had in, in the previous with James, to build on that and to move forward. The use of the consulting firm, the search firm, certainly was productive, and from the, as a community member, it certainly brought great confidence to the, the office. So I express that optimism, and hopefully a commitment from the board for that. Thank you very much.
Malcolm Fearing from Manio. And what I'd like to bring forward for consideration of the board since Mr. Ayers is leaving is some work that hasn't been completed. Concerns piece property, an alley, road easement in between Magnolia Market and our property. And that easement was developed or signed by members of my family back in '67. Corey Hemroyd brought this to y'all's attention in December of 2020. It came really to my attention April when a Ms. Amy Littman fell in the alleyway. How to say? Older than May. She was older than May. And, and she hurt herself. She went to the hospital. Since then, I've found out that many people have tripped on the busted and uneven concrete in that area. Mr. Ayers and I have been communicating on this since April, but since Mr. Ayers is going on to greener pastures now, the issue still remains. And that's a heavily trafficked, foot-traffic area of our town, and it's dangerous. We own the property. We think we own the property. Y'all have an easement. There has been previous work improvements to the north section of the easement where the trash dumpsters are, I believe. The town replaced some concrete there. So I'm not trying to assert my responsibility, but the last time I worked in what I, on property I thought was mine, we ended up in a fight, and it cost the town a lot of money. It cost us a lot of money. I'm trying to bring this to your attention for a, a safe resolution of the visiting public that's coming down here. So as Mr. Ayers is leaving, I'm sure he can update whoever needs to be updated on this issue. He probably has more information on it than I do, but it needs to be addressed, because again, fortunately, this, this individual, she was very kind in her discomfort that she suffered. It busted her, I mean, it busted her up bad. And we wouldn't want ourselves or our, our parents to suffer that same fate. So if you will, someone please be in touch with us so we can take care of this as soon as possible. Thank you very much. And I hope all of you all have a safe Thanksgiving with your families.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like we don't have any more takers for the public comment period. If you'd like, if you'd...
All right. Would anybody else like to be heard? Would anybody else like to be heard? All right, well, now close public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, this is item 6. Now, both of these items are for action, and they're actually tied together. So first up, 6a, this is a capital project ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is actually a direction from the state of North Carolina. We, of course, got financing from the state for the Shallow Bag Base Sewer Pump Station Replacement Project. They're giving us $1.106 million for that project. Of course, this board has seen that project, both in terms of approvals of the contracts as well as what we're proposing to put there. However, the state recently sent us correspondence asking us to do a special capital project ordinance. We already, this board has appropriated the funds. They're in our enterprise fund, but they want it in effect earmarked by a, in a special ordinance. So you'll see in the capital projects ordinance where we are actually putting the funds fully, fully in the budget that will, that will be earmarked for this particular project, so they can't go anywhere else. So that's a part of number one. I will speak to 6b, but I know we'll need two separate motions on this. 6b is the Budget Amendment Number 3. So Budget Amendment Number 3 was prepared by our Finance Director and in consultation with, with professional. The Budget Amendment moves the money around to put, once you approve the ordinance, it would move the money around to fund that ordinance, if you will. But also, there's one thing in there besides the Shallow Bag Base Sewer Pump Station. There's actually a donation that the Police Department worked with the folks at 7-Eleven, and this is part of the Manio Police Department Coat Food and Coat Drive. And it's a $2,000 donation to buy more things to help serve our community. And you may recall, of course, the coats are going to a local problem, but also the food is going to three local food pantries right here in Manio. So we're real, real thrilled with what 7-Eleven has, has done, but we, of course, do need to recognize that revenue. So that's also, that $2,000 donation is recognized in this Budget Amendment as well. Now, if it's all right with the board, we would take 6a first. That's a capital project ordinance. And if it's the will of the board to go ahead and follow the state directive, it would, would require a motion, second, and a vote to approve that ordinance.
I'm moved to approve the capital project ordinance for the Shallow Bag Base Sewer Pump Station Replacement.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second to approve the capital project ordinances. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes seem to have it, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then now we move on to 6b. That's the Budget Amendment that I just, that I just mentioned. This one would also require a motion, a second, and a vote in order to both fund the capital project ordinance and to recognize the $2,000 donation for the food and coat drive.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to Budget Amendment Number 3, James?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next up on the agenda, this is item number 7, and this is the section for mayor and commissioner comments.
Yeah, I don't have anything, but it's something that should be said, and I don't know how to say it, because it'd be long-winded, except I'd love to thank Laura Benson and her group of Ales, is what I'll call them, it's not a very good suggestion, but a wonderful crowd showed up last Saturday for a cleanup and pickup of Manio. It was a good showing, they had their vest on, you knew who they were, and everybody had brooms and shovels in their hands, and that's what Manio is all about. I just can't thank Ms. Benson and her group enough. I wished I knew all of them, but I didn't know a quarter of them, truthfully, there. It's, maybe we should, no, no, because we'd have to write everybody, but I would just like to thank everyone that participated in the event last Saturday for cleaning up Manio, and thank you. Richie, go ahead.
No, I'm not good. I've been on this board for 14 years, it seems like, and I really enjoy serving this board, and I thank the townspeople for keeping me up here. I would hope that the new board that is sitting would continue to do like our sign says, to preserve and prosper. Just keep that in mind, please. That's it, I'm short this week.
Well, you did terrific work, I'm not gonna get into that. Betty?
I just want to say to the presentations that we saw today, congratulations on an excellent audit, Shannon, I know how tireless they can be, and your whole team, as well as Michelle and Carl, y'all did a good job jumping. And it's just, Manio is on the move, and I'm proud of Manio, what we do, we'll sue your department as well, so. Wait a minute. That's it.
Christine?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Jason?
I'm good, thank you.
Eddie?
I'm short as well, thank you all for coming.
Wow, this is a good one. All right, that concludes the mayor's commissioner's comments. There's a need to go, I don't know if there is or not, but I had asked Betty, because I think she wanted to ask for the closed session, and do you need a closed session tonight?
No, not tonight.
I don't think so, though.
I don't think, not tonight, actually, it's been answered.
So, we'll strike that from the agenda, I don't know how you go about it, James, that we will not have a closed session. Since we haven't had a motion to go in closed session, we don't need a motion, do we?
Was this, I mean...
Unless, anybody else? Go ahead.
I think we, I think we still do, so.
Okay.
And if we don't, then it'll be short this week.
We have a need to go into closed session.
And in this, in this case, so, whatever motion, a motion would be required, so if it's all right, I'll just read, if the board, so, a person decides to move, it would be a closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A6, which is to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer, employee, or prospective public officer, employee.
All right, make a motion.
So moved on that.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion a second, we go in closed session. What we'll do, we'll move into the empty room, so the people can sit here, James.
If it's all right, Mr. Mayor, may we have a vote, because I don't know if that motion will carry, given the earlier conversation.
I thought, no, we haven't even voted on it yet.
Yet to go into closed session.
I thought I heard a second.
Yep, yes, sir.
All right.
Sorry.
It's been moved, we go in closed session, and there is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we described closed session, usually, we, at older times, we would sit out here and ask people to go outside, but we try to change that a little bit, because it's easy for us to move in, as y'all, so we'll go into any room with closed session, come out, and then dispense of whatever we did, and move on, and y'all can stay. We will not devote, we will devote, according to law, what we have spoken about, but that'll be it, so you'll know about closed session. All right. All right, we've got to have a motion to come out of closed session, and the town manager will describe what happened in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, and in this particular case, the discussion focused on the, 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 the North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A6, I was talking about the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective officer, employee. So, the only vote, there was no vote taken in this session, with the exception of exiting the closed session in accordance with the general statute. At this point, at this point, Mr. Mayor, the only thing left on the agenda is item number nine, this is an action item, and it's the adjournment, which would adjourn the board to its next meeting, which would be held December 1st, 2021, at 6:30 p.m.
All right, can we have a motion to adjourn until December 1st at 6:30?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is moved and second, we adjourn until December 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ayes have it.